We'd like to begin Albany Common Council meeting for Monday, March 5th. It's on. It's on. You can't hear me? Oh, I'm sorry. We'd like to start today's meeting. Can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Anane.
Present.
Mr. Plaris. Mr. Ballerin.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. O'Shea. Ms. Fahy.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Howey.
Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Here.
Mr. Robinson. It's fourteen, present.
Thank you. Would everyone please rise with me to say the National Anthem and have a moment of silence, please? Pledge allegiance, sorry. National Anthem, right. Please join me in a pledge allegiance of our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Right now, we will be taking a council meeting a little bit out of order for our guests here today. So, Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's make a motion to change our order of business so as to take up Resolution 12.31.18R as our first item and also to move that that be added to tonight's agenda by majority consent.
Do I have a second on the motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Priors?
Thank you, President. I would like to recognize for introduction and passage Resolution 12.31.18R.
Can a clerk please read the resolution?
A resolution of the Common Council honoring the memory and service of Albany Police Detective Kevin Meehan.
Is there any comment on the resolution? Ms. Priors?
Thank you. So, I, as the Chair of the Public Safety Committee, am honored to stand on behalf of the committee as well as the other members of the council to acknowledge the family. We are so very sorry for your loss and wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge the great work of a public servant who served this community. And although I have not had the privilege to meet this great public servant, I wanted to acknowledge the work that has been done in our community and in our city. My colleague, council member Jack Flynn, has graciously agreed to say a few words, so I would like to give him the opportunity and just so that the family is aware of what will happen. We will introduce, the resolution has been introduced, we will pass it as a council, and then we would like to present the family with the resolution. I have it here on my desk. Also, we will have remarks from one of the commanders here, and I want to also acknowledge all of the officers who took the time to come out as well. Thank you.
Mr. Flynn?
Thank you, Mr. President. These guys don't need to hear me for too long. They listened to my brother last week for five minutes, ten minutes, but for all the council members, I've known the Meehan family for over probably thirty-two, thirty-three years. So, they've been neighborhood friends of mine. My brother's been good friends with Kevin and Danny, so this law...
Very personal. Personal?
Personal to me personally. We went to St. Catherine's together. Their sister and my sister went to school together. We've been neighborhood friends for years, so one thing about Kevin that was very true to me is his dedication to the police department. With all that's going on nationwide, he is a symbol of our police department, and there's nothing I can say better than he was a true gentleman. His wife, Crystal, has been great. You know, I met them, met her at JCC where I've been a member for thirty years, and my brother made a big story about that the other day. I remember seeing Kevin maybe September, and boy, was he still fighting. And for somebody that had to go through what he has, it's very sad, but what a great soldier he was. And I just want to let the council members know that he was a true gentleman, honor, and he is a mentor for all these people, these police officers in the City of Albany. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Can a clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Plaris.
Yes.
Mr. Anane. Yes. Mr. Ballerin.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Fahy.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell.
Yes.
Mr. Flynn.
Yes.
Mr. Howey.
Yes.
Mr. Igo.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough.
Yes.
Ms. Love.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson.
Yes.
It's fourteen, affirmative? Resolution passes with every council member being a co-sponsor.
Thank you.
Ms. Priors?
Yes.
Pity Commander James Allen for Albany Police Department. I want to thank the council for recognizing and thanking Kevin Meehan, an amazing young man who was waiting soon. The things I'm going to say may sound like cliches, but the case of Kevin are all true. He was everything we aspire to be in our profession. He was dedicated, highly skilled, knowledgeable, tenacious, brave, fair, and compassionate. He feared everyone with respect. He cared. He was...
Thank you, Commander. So, thank you for everyone being here. I was able to attend the wake, and I could feel the love for the family and the love for his community, public servant, but a great man as well. And so, we'd like to thank you for being here and thank him for being part of our family, even though it was a short time. Can a clerk please call the first speaker?
Good evening, everyone. Before I begin, I'd like to publicly recognize two things. Mr. President, I know there was a problem with the microphone when I first got up here to speak last meeting. You did not deduct that from my time. You let me speak for my full five minutes.
I did. What did you say?
Thanks. So, I'd like to thank you for that. And second, even though she stepped out, Ms. Priors did add gun violence, gun safety to the agenda for the upcoming committee meeting, so I'd like to thank her for that as well. And I'm going to jump just right back into my comments where I left off. They always say that now is not the time. Now is the time to grieve, thoughts and prayers. That could have been true after Columbine, but this is, as I mentioned last committee or last council meeting, this is happening nearly every day. I'm not sure if you're aware, but there have been several incidents since just the last council meeting that something happened. There was a shooting on a campus in California, one in central Michigan. There was a teacher down in Dalton, Georgia, who locked himself in the room and fired a gunshot in the room. I don't know whatever happened with that, but that was an actual teacher on a school campus. There was the fact that an actual sheriff from the Broward County Sheriff's, a sheriff's deputy, did not run into Parkland. He sat out there, a literal good guy with a gun, the very definition of a good guy with a gun. A deputy, a trained armed uniformed officer, did not go into the school. We cannot be expecting our teachers to take down a shooter when even some police officers are apparently, and no disrespect to the people that were just in this room, but when you have people that won't go into a building, that that's their literal job. I'm not sure if you're aware, but about ten days ago, there was a gun threat at Colony Center. Last summer, there was a shooting at Crossgate, a couple rounds out by the Apple Store. And this, I just saw on the news as I was leaving Crossgate today, there was a lockdown at Utica College today, just a couple hours to the west of us, at Utica College. This is getting way too close to home, and I look forward to having a discussion at the meeting, which Ms. Priors will give us the details of. But it's absolutely insane. I said tongue-in-cheek to a couple of friends of mine last night that if Mr. Ellis didn't cut me off, I could have filibustered this room last meeting. This is crazy. It happens all too often, way too often, and the answer is not more guns. I spoke at the city school board meeting last week, and I told them, no matter what comes down at the federal level, at the state level, at the city level, I want them to come up with a resolution edict or whatever, that there will be no guns in schools in Albany. And I think this council should take that up, and I'll mention this at the upcoming committee meeting, that no matter if something passes on the federal level allowing teachers to have guns in school, even if they're trained, even if they're concealed carry carriers or whatever, I think the city should pass some kind of ordinance or resolution that says, no matter what at the federal level, no matter what at the state level, no, it's not going to happen in our city. There's just way too big of a chance of something going wrong. There are... A friend of mine at work was jokingly telling me that there's a reason school shootings don't happen in urban schools, metal detectors. If you want to, if you have the money for bonuses and for arming teachers and for giving teachers ammunition, invest in metal detectors, invest in, I even grant you, depending on the size of the school, armed security, but not teachers in classrooms. Armed security at the door, it works for stadiums, it works for government buildings, it works for every... Right here, we have security.
One minute remaining.
Thank you. Right here, in this very building, we don't have everyone in this room with a handgun in case someone comes in. We have an officer, maybe two, downstairs screening everyone when they come in. That's all that is needed. And that's something I think everyone can agree on without even stricter gun laws or anything like that. At my job, we have, I mentioned Crossgate's County Center, we have an upcoming storm meeting. I'm going to be talking about making sure people know what to do if a shooting happens. You know where I work? A grocery store. How ridiculous is that? I'm talking about running from cover from guns in a flipping grocery store. This is absolute madness, and I'll see you at the next committee meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Good evening. Vincent Reguso, I live at 13 Beach Avenue, Albany, New York. You know, it's been a long time I've been coming here, and I think this is the first time in the history of my life that I can stand in front of you and say I'm 100% in favor of the bonds that Judy Dorsett, who leads the financial committee, did with the ones that you'll be voting on today. She wrote me this email, this page and a half explaining everything that they had done, and she kept true to her word, that she said that she would look over every cereal bond with a fine-tooth comb and do what she could do with it. And she says here, "This past Monday, the finance committee met and considered ten of the bond ordinances. All that are related to the function of DGS and the engineering department. One was held in committee and nine were voted out of committee. Three of the ones that were voted out of the committee were reduced to the total of $711,000, and it was relating to vehicle equipment needed by DGS and a leach air tank out on the landfill." I am stunned. I really, truthfully, you know, I made a mistake when I said I was against the committee, et cetera, et cetera, and this email by Judy Dorsett led me to eat a lot of crow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reguso. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Good evening. My name is Archer Shirtlift. I am speaking on behalf of the New York Civil Liberties Union Capital Region Chapter. I am here tonight to express the New York Civil Liberties Union's support of Albany's designation as a sanctuary city. In the turmoil over immigration reform and the overzealous and discriminatory approach the federal government has taken towards our immigrant communities, we are proud that the city has taken a stand to protect its most vulnerable population. We support the city's efforts to be welcoming and inclusive and to reject intolerance and bigotry. Thank you.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the next speaker?
Members of the Common Council, my name is Lynn Jackson. I live at 223 South Swan Street in Albany. Today, I wish to read you a statement from the Capitol District Coalition Against Islamophobia. We, the Capitol District Coalition Against Islamophobia, want to thank Mayor Sheehan and her administration for her courageous defense of the principles of sanctuary cities. Mayor Sheehan has publicly advocated for sanctuary cities by not once, but twice appearing on the Fox News Tucker Carlson Show, a national TV show. Mayor Sheehan has publicly advocated for sanctuary cities in the local press, including the Times Union and the Alt. Mayor Sheehan has defended sanctuary cities in the face of a recent threat from the federal government to withhold federal funds unless Albany abandons these principles. These principles, as expressed in the letter of December 7th, 2017, sent to the Department of Justice, include making the community safer and law enforcement more effective by cultivating a partnership of trust between all residents, visitors, and the Albany Police Department. The letter said, "Individuals should not be afraid to contact the police if they are a victim of a crime simply because they are concerned that the police will inquire as to their immigration status." As noted in the letter, "No law requires local law enforcement to collect information regarding an individual's immigration or citizenship status unless it is necessary for an investigation required by law." Mayor Sheehan has noted that "One in 10 residents in the City of Albany were born in a country other than the United States." Mayor Sheehan's executive order of April 2017 notes, quote, "The City of Albany ensures equity and social justice for all..." Excuse me. The quote is, "The City of Albany ensures equity and social justice guide all decisions. We wish to sincerely thank Mayor Sheehan for her strong and public advocacy of sanctuary cities." Thank you very much. And I have a copy in case you want one.
Pass it up to the clerk, please. Could a clerk please call the next speaker?
I came here looking to speak on one topic, but actually, I feel I need to comment on three. First of all, in looking over Resolution 931.18R, more specifically, the agreement, item seven is blank, and I just want the council to speak to that when they just have a discussion or vote on that, making sure that they're not going to fill it in with something later, it's an error, whatever the case may be. Secondly, to piggyback on the concept of schools having teachers armed with guns, I am a high school teacher, and I really don't want that extra responsibility, but if that conversation is going to happen and people are pro guns in schools and in teachers' hands, please make sure they're fingerprint trigger only, that is, the guns only work for the person the gun is assigned to, not anybody else. But larger than that, as a common council, as you consider things that employ our youth, that entertain our youth, that counsel our youth, that help our youth in this city, please make sure you realize each and every one of those conversations, for something the city can provide to our youth, is prevention before we get to the point of having a school shooter. People need to feel connected, especially the young people. So, as you entertain those things at your tenure here, please, please realize you're not just saying yes to a city park or yes to a summer employment program. You are probably connecting with somebody and providing an opportunity and helping prevent something we'll never even know we prevented. Now, on to what I actually was going to talk about, which is the city's potholes. On the 15th of February, I called 434-CITY. I reported a set of potholes, specifically that on New Scotland Avenue heading towards the hospital from, I think it's Lake Street, and also a night of terrorists, basically the entire two-block section. When I called, the receptionist there actually informed me that the New Scotland section had been entered personally by her, that's on her drive to work. I want to point out, it is now March 5th, and watch as I count out, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18. It is 19 days later. Now, I need to read something about what's actually on Albany, New York.gov website, specifically generalservices/snowandice removal/streetmaintenance ASP. Street repairers, street construction, the Department of General Services is responsible for all street repair and some street construction. DGS inspects all streets on a regular basis for depressions, street digs, et cetera. If any of these are found, DGS immediately, let me say that word again, immediately, makes the repairs to ensure the safety of the motorists and the pedestrians. Every year, DGS inspects the city and evaluates the streets and needs of resurfacing. After evaluation, the list is reviewed and the work is completed by DGS. This work is prioritized by severity. How this service is obtained? Call 434-CITY, as I had. So, here is a route that leads to one of our largest hospitals, and they haven't paved it for 19 days. That just seems a horrible misuse of their prioritization. And what I would actually like to call for is a furlough of payment, or that is, use the same exact definition of immediately to pay the following three workers from DGS as they treat immediately for repairing potholes in this city. Commissioner Daniel Mirable, Deputy Commissioner Daniel W. Delillo, and Director of Operations, Frank Ziole. I suggest we pay them at the expediency that I fix our city streets. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can a clerk please call the next speaker?
Thank you. My name is Dennis Karius. I live at 13 York Road, Albany, New York, and I really would like to see our channel come back on, the Channel 18. When this meeting started, we all pledged allegiance to the flag for "Our nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all." We all have freedom of speech and freedom of the press from our Constitution, our Bill of Rights. We, the people, had our own channel on TV, Channel 18, for years. And the PEG Oversight Board, we would really like to see that go in a good direction. I know there will be a meeting this Thursday with the PEG Oversight Board here in this building. If you're ever getting brainwashed by mainstream media, our channel, Channel 18, can tell the truth. If you turn on Fox News and they say, "We have to send our troops into Canada," our channel can say, "No, no, they found oil under the ground up in Canada. Don't do that." So, really, we don't want to, we're not going to be getting paid by the, you know, upper 1%. We want to help 99.9% of the people go in a good direction. So, if you're getting brainwashed by mainstream media, our channel can tell the truth. There are so many more channels out there now than there were years ago. There's no reason to end Channel 16, 17, and 18. It's really sad. I know, we were just talking about 16, 17, 18, 19. If I said how many days, I would go on forever, how many days the studio's been closed at the main branch of the Albany Public Library? It's been about 10 months now. So, we're hoping to get, go back in a good direction. And again, we really would like to keep Channel 16, 17, and 18, because if things ever go in a bad direction, they could be great. So, we would really ask that we can keep those three channels and not get rid of them. They would never do that to Channel 6, 10, and 13. Why should they do it to 16, 17, and 18? There's so many more channels now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have no more speakers signed up for this, tonight's public comment period, so public comment period is being closed, and we'll move on to approval of minutes from previous meeting. Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the February 22nd meeting.
Do you have a second? All in favor? Aye. Minutes approved. Moving now on the line to reports of standing committees.
Yeah. Local laws, Mr. President, are held for consideration?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Now, moving to standing committees.
The, in the absence of the Chair of the Finance Committee, I've been asked to do a report of the Finance Committee and their meeting of February 26th, of which you will also provide with a written copy of the report. The Finance Committee met on February 26th to review the city's debt report with Treasurer Darius Shanafar. The treasurer noted that Albany has reduced our total debt from 2017 to 2018 by $12.37 million. The committee also met with Commissioner Morabelli, City Engineer Randy Milano, and other DGS staff to review the bonding requests made in Ordinance 1.21.18 through 10.21.18 for vehicle and equipment purchases and repairs to streets, sidewalks, ADA ramps, city-owned buildings, the golf course, and the landfill. With the committee's encouragement, DGS reevaluated bonding requests and made several recommendations for changes. The committee held Bond Ordinance 1021.18 for City Hall Master Plan Study and added the $125,000 master study request, rather, to Bond Ordinance 9.21.18, renovations to city-owned buildings, to fund the further evaluation of City Hall, but allowed any funds remaining after the study for actual renovations to City Hall. That resulted in Ordinance 9.21 being increased to $111,000. That resulted in Ordinance 9.21 being increased to $1.125 million after being passed out of committee with a positive recommendation. All remaining bond ordinances were passed out of committee with a positive recommendation with the following reductions in amounts and changes to titles. 1.2118 relating to replacement vehicles for DGS was reduced by $140,000 to $1,264,000. Ordinance 2.2118 relating to replacement equipment for DGS and waste and recycling cart purchases was reduced by $290,000 to $1,799,000. Ordinance 4.2118 relating to replacing lich aid tanks at the landfill was reduced by $281,000 to $420,000. And the purpose of the ordinance was changed to landfill infrastructure improvements. Ordinance 5.2118, which by the way will not be voted on tonight, that was for repair to the retaining wall at the 90th of the golf course. That ordinance will change the name of it to Golf Course Capital Improvements, so any remaining funds can be used for other infrastructure improvements. And that will be held pending some further review by Commissioner Morablie. The above changes result in a net reduction of $711,000 for all bond ordinances passed out of the committee on February 26 with a positive recommendation. The Finance Committee will meet, will be meeting on March 19th and 20th to interview candidates for the Board of Assessment Review and possible consideration of local law C, and on April 2nd and April 10th to consider all remaining bond ordinances with the Police Department, the Fire Department, and Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Reports of standing committees. Mr. Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Parks, Recreation, and Family Services Committee met March 1st. We met with Commissioner Jones and his staff, and we talked about the programs for the youth. We actually had a very good discussion, talked about some important dates for hiring of the kids, some of the changes he's improving this year versus last year. For anybody that wasn't there, I do have packets available over in there if you need it. But I think everything went well. Like I said, all the committee members were there, and we had a very good discussion on the programs. We also discussed Resolution 6.2218R. It was great for the public to come out. We actually had both presidents of the neighborhood associations there who were very in favor of naming the park Malcolm X. So we voted a favorable recommendation for that resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Ms. Prills.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to acknowledge that the Public Safety Committee will be meeting on Monday, March 12th at 5:30 PM. The purpose being to meet with the consultant firm that was retained by the city to conduct the search for the next police chief. In addition, we will allow public comment for residents to come out and talk about the mass shoot, school shootings that have taken place. So that, again, that meeting is on Monday, the 12th, at 5:30 PM. Thank you.
Thank you. No more reports on any committees or reports on ad hoc committees? We'll be moving on to ord, hold on, Ms. Prills? Ad hoc? Okay.
So just wanted to acknowledge, as it relates to the PEG ad hoc committee that hasn't met, but I just want to give a quick update on a few things. One being the Chair of the PEG Oversight Board, myself met with, and myself met with the Public Library last week. The purpose being, the Public Library is requesting that in order for any PEG operations to happen in the library, a memorandum of understanding must be signed. And so the city, a representative from the city was also at that meeting to discuss the MO, the MOA, or MOU, I'm sorry. And so that has not been signed. And until that document is signed, PEG operations cannot take place in the library. The conversation was that the city, as well as the library, will be able to reach some agreement shortly so that the public can get back into the studio as soon as possible. In addition, the PEG Oversight Board will be conducting a strategic planning meeting in April to discuss next steps in the direction they want to move PEG. And then lastly, they are in the process of hiring a new coordinator. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinances on tonight's agenda are held with the following exceptions. Agenda item number one, which will have an amendment. Agenda item number two with amendment. Agenda item number three, four. Agenda item number six. Agenda item number seven, eight, and nine. And the remaining are held.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Moving on to ordinance held, Mr. O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance number 1.21.18 and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Can a clerk please read ordinance?
That would be with amendment, just to clarify. With amendment.
Yes, as amended.
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $1,264,000, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $1,264,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof for vehicles.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none. Would a clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Ms. Anani.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance number 2.21.18 as amended and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $1,799,000, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $1,799,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof for equipment.
Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani.
Yes.
Mr. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance 3.21.18 and as amended and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $5 million, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $5 million serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof for the Pine Bush restoration.
And there is no amendment to this ordinance, by the way. There's no amendment to this. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani.
Yes.
Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance 4.21.18, and this one was amended. Costing it down. And I ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $420,000, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $420,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof landfill infrastructure improvements.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can a clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani. Mr. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Igo. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance 6.21.18 and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain purchases by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $2.5 million, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $2.5 million serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, street reconstruction.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Seeing none? Clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani. Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance 7.21.18 and ask for a passage, and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain projects by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $500,000, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $500,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof sidewalk reconstruction.
Any discussion? Seeing none? Can a clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani. Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller. Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance 8.21.18 and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain projects by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $250,000, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $250,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, ADA compliance.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Seeing none? Can a clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani. Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Fahy, got you. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice ordinance 9.21.18 as amended and ask for its passage on a roll call vote.
Can a clerk please read the ordinance?
An ordinance authorizing certain projects by the city of Albany, New York at a maximum estimated cost of $1,125,000, and authorizing the lease financing or the issuance of $1,125,000 serial bonds of said city to pay the cost thereof, renovations to city buildings.
Any discussion on the ordinance? Mr. O'Brien.
I just wanted to note, because I don't think we mentioned it in the report, but the three buildings, in addition to planning for more restoration of the City Hall Building, are the Breverd Street Firehouse renovations, Lincoln Park Bath House building stabilization, and the roof on the part of the DGS building where all the apparatus is kept. Those are the three principal building projects for the issue.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. More further discussion? Seeing none? Clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani. Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller.
Yes.
Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy. Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Ordinance passes. Right along with consideration of resolutions, the goal of resolutions introduce, Ms. Fahy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 931-18R for introduction.
Can a clerk please call, read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council authorizing the execution of a payment in lieu of tax agreement with Albany Executive House Apartments Incorporated.
Mr. Conti.
Mr. President, I just want to make one note. The blank spots in the attached part of the agreement relate to the date of adoption of the apartment.
Until the council actually acts on it. And that will, that will be referred to committee, the planning committee.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 1031-18R and ask for its introduction.
Clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council consenting to the transfer of funds which will affect the salary total in the Department of Elementary and Services for the 2018 budget.
Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. President. That is referred to the Human Resources Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice Resolution 11.31.18R, and I ask for its introduction.
Clerk, would you want to pass this?
Excuse me, and passage.
Thank you, sir. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
The Resolution of the Common Council supporting the City of Albany Department of Development and Planning in its application to the New York State Department of State for state assistance in funding the engineering and design phase of the waterfront connector multi-use path project.
Any comment on the resolution? Seeing none? Clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani. Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller. Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy.
Yes.
Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn. Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Resolution passes. Now moving on to resolutions held. Mr. O'Brien.
I notice Resolution 5.22.18 and ask for its passage.
And that's going to be passed with amendment.
As amended, yes.
Thank you. Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council enacting a home rule message to the New York State Legislature requesting the enactment of Senate Bill, Number 70 Bill Number 8722, entitled "An Act to Amend the Real Property Tax Law in Relation to Requiring Assessors of Real Property in the City of Albany to Obtain Commissioner of Taxation and Finance Certification of Successful Completion of the Basic Course of Training and Education."
Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none? Clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Anani. Ms. Plares.
Yes.
Mr. Baller. Mr. Conti. Ms. Fahy.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Ms. Farrell. Mr. Flynn.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Mr. Hoey. Mr. Igo. Mr. Johnson. Mr. Kimbrough. Ms. Love. Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Mr. Robinson. 14 affirmative?
Resolution passes. Moving on to resolutions held. Ms. Love? Ms. Love? Can a clerk please read the resolution?
Resolution of the Common Council naming the pocket park at the corner of Large Street and Clinton Avenue in honor of Malcolm X.
Any discussion on the resolution? Seeing none? Ms. Fahy?
Yes, I just want to say that I think this is, this is something that's very important. When we make a decision to name one of our parks, to name one of our schools, it really becomes...